All right.
Okay, we're ready, Mr. Jay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman's gonna have to squint here.
Want some?
See if they work.
Will they?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
We'll get the planning department readers at each location.
I had them. They're out in the car. I got the box.
They were inside Paul's cup.
I'd like to bring this Planning Commission Comprehensive Planning Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. So we have new business here. What do we have?
Okay, so committee meeting schedule, and we have landed on the fourth Monday of the month at 6:00 P. M. You can see the dates in front of you for the remainder of this calendar year, September 23rd, October 28th, November 25th, December 23rd. Recognizing that those last two meetings, November and December, are holiday weeks, so those would likely be either canceled or rescheduled. But we just wanna come to you and see if the fourth Monday of the month works, if six o'clock works, and then give you the option to continue to meet in person. We met this time here in the council chambers. We think a conference room would be more suitable to have a discussion, which is sort of more the purpose of this type of meeting versus executive meetings or public hearings. So we could meet in person in the, on the planning department's library on the fifth floor, or we can meet virtually if that works better for you all. So kind of whatever you all prefer.
Committee? What's your thoughts? I'm okay with in-person, but I've got three other people.
All of the next three dates or four dates actually work for me.
Okay.
And in-person is okay.
Okay, so we will.
An option maybe for virtual, maybe.
Sure, we can do that, and we will look to have those scheduled upstairs rather than here. It just makes it easier to, we're all sitting around one table. Makes it easier to talk.
Be briefing the steering committee meeting. Be briefing here.
Uh, yeah, so I believe Chair Taylor and Commissioner Hart were present at the steering committee meeting last week. Todd was not, but that's okay. They can tell you all about it, but really, we just wanted to, one, let you know that AECOM, which is our consultant on the comprehensive plan, will be creating a sort of digital version of that future land use mapping exercise you all did. We'll share that out once we have that with both the steering committee, but also the planning commissioners to engage with sort of on their own time. Can kind of leave comments, draw out sort of future land uses for the county, but really, we just, I just wanted to turn over to the three of you for a discussion about the meeting, how you all thought it went, specifically the exercise. Was it useful? Is there additional, you know, thoughts that you had that you want to share? You can let Todd know what you all did, give him an idea. Yeah, just wanted to turn it over to you.
I had to miss a little bit of that meeting for another meeting, but we basically had a activity, I guess you would call it, or something like that, that we were in tables in, around the room and had maps and clear paper on top that we could draw on. They asked us to give ideas and suggestions of future thoughts for the county for many years ahead. Places for development and growth and residence and, you know, just transportation infrastructure, I guess. Just a bunch of different things, throwing out ideas from everybody at the table. That was all the steering committee people that showed up. And then after the group discussions, each table presented to the group.
So it was like one map per table, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Every table had all the maps, break, smaller, you know, closer up images than an overall image that we could draw on.
No, it worked out good. They had different colors for the residential, commercial, industrial. There was a whole lot of, let's take the MetroLink out every which direction, okay, on everybody's part. I'd say most, the majority of it was heading towards North County. But on the other hand, we had the complete expansion to go south as well as west. And somebody even wanted to go up towards the new zoo expansion up in North County for transportation up there. That, I'm sorry, I don't remember the representative's name there. Somebody that was from that North County group up there. But she had all her posted notes. I think she had fifty of them. And she wasn't even looking at the map. Let's do this, let's do that, let's do this. She was on it. But, but then again, I asked, we asked where she lives. She lives in St. Peters. But she's on a salary, okay, for, I would say.
I think that was probably Rebecca Zoll from North County Inc.
I would say you're right, and I understand that. She did a great job of.
And we kept all the, you know, we're gonna scan those in, so those will be available for you guys for review, Todd for you to look at, including her posted note.
She had a lot of, a lot of stuff there, you know. I mean, there were things like, we need to have hotel and retail up there around the sinks area, right up in that area when they put the zoo up there. So when people come to visit the zoo from out of town, they'll have a place to stay. And it's good thoughts, but we also were talking about South County, West County, all the unincorporated areas that we have that some might have been industrial before, really should be residential and vice versa. There's places there that really should be industrial or commercial for taxes, because the residential just everywhere. And these last pockets of property that are still left in St. Louis County that the builders had went past years ago because it cost too much to develop. Still gonna cost a lot to develop, and all they're doing is shrinking the houses down, and every time they shrink these houses down, and I gotta watch what I say, because, you know, I used to work for people that worked basically with the home builders, but it cuts into the taxes. You know, there's not enough tax value coming out of those homes to support what we got going on. New roads, you know, we'd like to have sidewalks through the county roads. There's a whole lot of county roads that don't have sidewalks, which people could enjoy, you know, which would make people want to live in the county. But all those things were talked about at each table.
Was it the same group of people that were at the first meeting up in?
Yes, there was.
Okay, so it's the same.
There was, and some, I don't think we had as many, because we had, I had to go to another table.
Right.
But we did not group people by topic area, so it was a mix of, you know, expertise as well.
But the same invitees that were at the last one?
Yeah.
I think, they're part of the committee.
Yes. Yes, yes, all steering committee members.
We talked about green space also and greenways, you know, trails and riverfront areas a little bit. I'm not sure that there was, you know, you know, full-fledged final ideas or anything like that, but we just were trying to brainstorm some things and talked about some things that we thought should be in focus.
Yeah, I would say the goal of the exercise was really to imagine sort of your ideal version of St. Louis County, not letting sort of existing land use development patterns sort of color your thinking. Because I mean, as we've been sort of working through STLCO 2050, I mean, what we've been finding is that the current way of doing things, it doesn't work anymore. So if we want the county to be something different, we have to do things different, right? And so we're trying to gather from folks that really would be implementation partners on a lot of this, sort of what, what does that look like for them, right? So a lot of the steering committee members are, you know, business leaders, nonprofits, you know, environmental people, sort of all different sort of professions and walks of life, so.
Are there any, like, developers included in there?
There are. There's a couple. There's, we have an affordable housing developer from Bywater, Aaron Burnett. Do we have, is he the main, is he the housing developer? We have most of those from the homeowners association, the home builders.
Home Builders Association, Elizabeth Zucker from.
Yes.
Byco.
Yeah, so yeah, we've got several, several folks from the construction and development community.
Yeah. That's good. Any other thoughts on the?
I mean, and nobody was talking there, like, no residential, no this. It's just trying to figure out the smartest places to put this that makes sense somehow. And I don't know, I said smaller lots. Well, that's what's been going on, because most people that are buying homes today, they don't want a big yard. The majority of the folks. There's a development right now over there at McKelvey's putting in, that you, I'm sure you, right across from YMCA in Chesterfield. They're, you know, eight foot apart, and they're a million dollars apiece. Okay, they're like a townhome, and they're selling them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it's how that's developed around there, and then right across, right across that, that detention, huge detention basin that's a lay, but it's a detention basin or I don't know how many apartments, and I'm sure some of them are condos, you know, stacked condos, but it's there, so.
Yeah, and so we'll be sending out a digital version of what Paul and Keith did in person. And if you have questions about how it works, or sort of what you're supposed to be doing with it, if you want to engage with it, you know, feel free to reach out. We'd be happy to walk you through anything.
How did you think it went?
I think, I think it went well. There was a lot of good discussion. I was, I was parked at Keith's table, actually. But at the end, we, everybody kind of reported out, and I thought there was a lot of good discussion about how do we facilitate getting people to sort of different nodes of activity, whether that is housing or commercial activity, jobs, other amenities, and then a lot of, like Paula said, a lot of discussion about sort of green space and open space and where is that currently, but also where, where could more of that be built on? You know, the table Keith and I were at, we're talking a lot about the Spanish Lake area, especially with Wild Care Park coming on, is being developed or redeveloped as sort of a green slash, like, eco district, expanding the riverfront GRG trail that ends currently at Chain of Rocks Park, sort of just having that follow River View Road up to the Wild Care Park to Columbia Bottoms. Just follow the length of the river, connect to parks and floors and things like that. Really trying to imagine what could be. There was some, and I think this is kind of natural, like to, like default to this is what is kind of currently here right now, so how do we enhance that? Instead of sort of re-envisioning something completely different, which, I mean, I don't blame folks for doing that. It's sort of a natural thought process. But I thought it went really well. I don't know if Jacob or Mel or Summer have different ideas.
Oh, not a different idea, but I can't remember who I was talking to at the end, or if you were by me, Jacob or not, but one of the steering committee members said they'd be interested to see what those different exercises looked like stacked up on each other, because we did them just literally on trace paper. So that's one of the things we're gonna look at. It's like, how do these all layer up and interact? Because I, whoever, whoever mentioned this to me, they noticed that, you know, this group was sort of transportation focused, and this group was sort of land use focused. So what did those look like on top of each other? So it was really interesting.
It was good. I thought
I.
Nobody was done in a hurry.
Right.
Right.
Kept looking and putting there too, you know, a lot of good information into.
And then the digital version that we're gonna send out will, you know, even people who did participate last week can, you know, go further if they want.
Any other discussion about the steering committee?
I thought, I just generally good. So good work, Paul. Good work to our team at AECOM. Good work, Summer. And lots of more good work out of you guys to come, so.
Okay, now we got our survey results.
Yeah, just to prep Summer here, back in April, March, April, April, I think, we sent out a statistically valid survey throughout the county. We have gotten results, and Summer is gonna share some key highlights of the results of the survey.
Oh, good evening, Commissioners. Wait, I'm gonna adjust this, actually. So just a reminder of where we are in the process. Right now, we're in the future land use scenarios and policy analysis, so that's what we were doing at the steering committee meeting. But for the first half of the year, we were doing a lot more listening and learning, just understanding what the existing conditions are. And as part of that, we put out a statistically valid survey. So we sent it to seven thousand randomly selected households in the county and received one thousand one hundred three responses, which is a higher response rate than other ETC surveys. On the right, you can see the demographic breakdown, both from the American Community Survey and the countywide survey that we received. Felt this was a pretty good estimation of the demographics of the county. All right, so for every question, every key issue, we asked them two questions. We asked, one, how satisfied are you with this service? And two, how important do you feel this should be in moving forward? So for this first question, the highest satisfaction was, across the county, was parks and open spaces, access to healthcare services and restaurant dining options, and the lowest satisfaction was access to childcare opportunities, opportunities for young adults to meet, and reliability and frequency of public transportation. So this is across the entire county. In terms of importance, we had them rank their top four. And the ones that were most consistently ranked in the top four were sense of physical safety, quality of K-12 public education, affordability of housing, and overall value for county tax dollars and fees. And the least important were access to post-secondary education, clubs, taverns, and other nightlife, and meeting people from all walks of life. And again, this is from across the county. So when you combine both the importance and satisfaction that respondents gave, you get sort of a list of priorities. So the highest priority are the things where people rank them as important, but were maybe not as satisfied. And so they mirror the ones that respondents had identified as important. So it's sense of physical safety, affordability of housing, overall value for tax dollars and fees, and quality of K-12 education. And then a second tier of also high priority issues are reliability and frequency of public transportation, walkability, overall cleanliness, and county government services. And this isn't to say the rest of them are not high priority. It just means maybe some, some of them people were already satisfied with, which made the score a little lower. So now we'll look at some of the key priority areas. So the first one is sense of physical safety. This was the top priority in five of the seven districts. And while crime is a factor, of course, of physical safety, we also have heard both in the free text response of the survey and in conversations with residents, numerous concerns about traffic violence as an effect, an effector of physical safety. So on the right, you can see by district, the responses in terms of satisfaction, in sense of physical safety. You can see some districts such as one, four, six, maybe have a little bit lower satisfaction than some of the others.
Can I make one comment about that?
Yeah.
The traffic violence? It's probably already been discussed or whatever, but I feel like traffic violence is one thing you can have less control over and avoid less if you don't want to go to a certain address. You don't have to go to that address, but if you have to travel from one place to the other and you're traveling on a highway, it's much more inconvenient to go around the highway to avoid violence. So I feel like that's, it is a very important thing.
Right. And that actually supports our thesis. No, you're so good, actually. This is a perfect transition. Which is that even cars are not super safe on the road, so it's not just pedestrians. We had a mapping activity put up on the website where residents could put a pin down on areas that they felt could like, there was an opportunity for improvement, and by far the largest, like, topic for improvement was improving road safety in their areas where there were pedestrian fatalities, or even driver injuries and crashes. I forget what HIN stands for.
And so recently, East West Gateway Council Government's completed a safety action plan. And this is a map of the sort of regional, but distilled down to just the county high injury network. So they looked at all the crash data for the past five years, I believe, and mapped out where crashes are happening and with what frequency. And so you can see sort of, I'm gonna guess it's red, the top ten percent of roadways, intersections, where crashes are happening, largely concentrated in North County. And then you can see where other crashes are happening with, with some frequency, decreasing frequency.
Are these just county roads or are these highways?
These are all county roads, state-maintained roads.
So MODOT roads.
Municipal roads.
These two.
Yeah.
And just if you're interested, it's all on East West Gateway's website, too, including the interactive map, so you can go in and click them on and off, too.
Surprised forty's not on there.
I feel Interstate isn't on.
Interstates, I think, are excluded from this.
I believe interstates are.
That makes sense.
Because I. We'll link you.
I wasn't sure if that was fifty-five or not. That was.
No, down in South County. Those are, looks like it's gonna be like Lima Ferry, maybe, is that one of those Grabaway? No, no, I'm not. Grabaway is. Teson Ferry and Lima Ferry.
Okay.
Are both red, are the two red ones in South County.
Okay.
Or is that Telegraph? I guess that this is just me guessing without looking at it.
Telegraph and Lima Ferry. I just was curious, because, yeah, if you take out the highways, you know, two seventy isn't on there and Highway forty isn't on there, and fifty-five and seventy, that makes more sense to me.
Well, I think it's also the, East West Gateway's thinking is that the safety action plan is designed to guide local governments in making sort of road improvement decisions, and we can't really do anything about the interstate. Interstates is a limited access system.
Right.
Are, already have a lot of, you know, safety as part of the system despite the high speeds. So this really is focused on the type of road network that goes through our communities, not just our. And, and it is accounting for vehicle-on-vehicle, vehicle-on-fixed object, pedestrian, bicyclist, all types of crashes.
Is any of this, is how much traffic? You know, these roads or these, what's the traffic count on these ones that are red? Are they high traffic?
I don't believe this map and this layer accounts for that, but I know that they took in traffic counts, took those into account. I'm about to email everyone a link to the.
Yeah, this, this is just number of crashes per year, per mile.
Yeah.
And when asked about non-car modes of transportation, respondents generally were dissatisfied with their comfort level using them. So on the left, it's comfort as a pedestrian or bicyclist, and right is comfort as waiting at a public transportation stop. It's the number of people who answered dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. So you can see across the county. dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. Um, so you can see across the county, people are generally dissatisfied with their comfort level using other modes of transportation. Um, and then the second identified priority area is affordability of housing. Um, similarly, affordability, uh, affordability is something that respondents are dissatisfied with countywide. Um, and affordability, uh, is related to either the cost of housing or also the cost of maintenance. So on the right, on, on the left, you can see, uh, the median home value in St. Louis County in 2022. So the darker areas are more expensive. Um, and then you can see respondents in every district are generally dissatisfied with housing options. So the current options are becoming increasingly unaffordable. Um, and then on the flip side, housing stock is aging in the inner ring. So on the left, you can see the darker areas, uh, represent houses that were built earlier, up to the 1930s. And on the right, it's percent of respondents who are dissatisfied with the physical condition of their residence. So you can see that there's an association between the districts that are in the inner ring and satisfaction with your house's condition.
Yes, like this is showing District 7 residents are barely, there's not a very many that are dissatisfied versus our District 1, which is gonna be one of our, gonna be probably our oldest district. You know, you can just see, just, just by age is also driving those.
Can I ask, wha-what's the reason for that question? If, if, if you're unhappy with your home?
More likelihood to move?
But you're making.
Like satisfaction with physical condition?
But the options of what there is to buy there. Say you wanted to live in that area and there aren't a lot of options of high quality or.
Homes that are kept up.
Yes.
I would argue that it's even beyond that, too. It's about asking residents about how they feel about, um, the availability and, uh, of, of program, or of housing in their, in their communities that, um, it, cast their, you know, or meet their standards for, for viability and viability. And it also helps county government, if we know that residents in certain geographies are experiencing more difficulty in the maintenance of their homes, um, where there is, that, that's going to drive then property values. That's going to drive how many houses are being sold in that, in those geographies. It's also going to impact the residents of those homes. It also helps county government to, um, determine whether there is perhaps a need for us to look at programs in various ways that we can intervene in the community to drive and improve this for our residents, so that the housing stock is stronger, um, so that residents that are struggling with these maintenance questions, um, you know, that there's perhaps a, um, you know, perhaps there are programs that can help, uh, intervene in those issues.
For multifamily, um, properties also, they can't, they don't afford, they can't maintain their property necessarily. It's up to the, the property owner. So the residents may be unhappy with.
So, so the, the tenants may be unhappy with the current condition of where they're running from? Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. Sorry.
No, I, um, encourage the questions. Um, the third, uh, highest priority identified via the survey was the value for county tax dollars and fees. This is a bit more open-ended, but we felt, uh, based also on conversations, the way people have answered. It's driven by infrastructure maintenance and cleanliness of the county. So in terms of infrastructure maintenance, the pavement conditions on roadways are generally, people are generally fairly dissatisfied. Um, you can see the exception is in District 7, where people are maybe a little happier, but that's generally because the roads are a little newer. Um, but as you can see, road conditions are not evenly distributed across the county. And then similarly, uh, the respondent satisfaction with cleanliness is not evenly distributed across the county. So cleanliness is often a driver of reputation and perception, both from, like, residents of the area and people outside the area. So you can see, for example, that District 4 respondents note worse satisfaction in general with cleanliness.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what districts are.
Oh, sure. So the fourth, we could have put up a map. The fourth district is going to be, um, far north St. Louis County, north of, basically north of 270. District 1 is gonna be inner ring, north St. Louis County. Um, so from New City up to about 270 is gonna be District 1. Uh, District 6 is gonna be the, you live in District 6, unincorporated, south St. Louis County. Um, District 3 is going to be just to your west. Um, District 7 is far west St. Louis County, Wildwood, Chesterfield. Um, and District 2 is going to be sort of northwest St. Louis County. That's where, like, Maryland Heights and.
Creve Court.
Creve Court.
And then 5 is.
5 is, it's, it's gonna be like Clayton, uh, Webster.
Kind of east of Lindbergh, north of, like, Watson.
Sorry.
No, no.
No, this is.
I may have missed a map.
This is, this is a good, um, good feedback.
Good feedback, yes. Thank you.
Write that down, Paul.
Um, and then in general, uh, prolonged perceptions about government investment in your community will affect how you feel about general things. So in District 1, um, when we asked people about how, like, what they felt were the most important things to prioritize, um, a larger proportion of respondents from District 1 had zero, selected zero priority areas as compared to other, uh, districts in the county. And then in District 4, which is the northernmost county, um, respondents, more, more respondents, uh, indicated dissatisfaction by proximity to cultural amenities. Um, this is, uh, generally similar for all of the questions that we asked related to this. So for things like shopping, work, et cetera. Um, and finally, we have quality of K-12 education. That is not necessarily something that we can influence directly, but there is definitely a pronounced inequity in the quality of K-12 education. Again, you can see respondents in District 4 are more dissatisfied with the quality of, uh, education in their area.
Summer, was this public or private, or just education in general?
Uh, it's public.
Oh, sorry.
Um.
Thank you.
So one thing that does affect K-12 education is property values, um, that affects funding. So on the left, we have, uh, tax rates for different school districts. And then on the right, you can see the property values in 2022. You can see that the areas that have the lowest property values generally have the highest, um, tax rates, suggesting that those areas are more tax burdened for schools.
And it also connects to the respondents', um, perception of the quality of the education.
Right.
Typically, um, those districts that have the higher tax rates in those communities with the lower property values are also where they're saying that they're less satisfied with the quality of their K-12 education system.
So how does this relate to the comprehensive plan? Um, as, as we all know, the comprehensive planning process has identified five priority areas, and these mirror some of the things that survey responses also captured. Um, of course, not all of these could be asked directly in the survey, but we can see how some of these issu, the identified issues of the comprehensive plan have affected, uh, resident answers to some of these questions. So, for example, for population stagnation, um, even the areas of the county that maybe are reporting generally more satisfaction with some services cannot necessarily sustain that growth since the, the, the population of the county itself is mostly still. Um, for infrastructure cost burden, that's, uh, well represented by the survey. Um, people are not very satisfied with their, um, road, pavement and road conditions, but the current population cannot sustain prolonged maintenance of those same roads. Um, for housing affordability, similar, um, maintenance costs are going up, rent burdens are going up, in areas that are, are becoming increasingly unaffordable. Um, for job skills mismatch, uh, in general in the county, this wasn't as captured by the survey, but in general, there's a mismatch between, uh, the skill of jobs and the supply of workers. Um, and then finally, social environmental resilience is something that we're always thinking about, um, especially in terms of flooding, in terms of heat, which is relevant today. All right, that's all. If you guys have questions, let me know.
Can you go back to the slide with the education, housing costs and tax?
Yeah.
That one. I was just curious. I didn't, just wanting to take a quick look at the, what the order, I guess it was, it's put in residential costs? Is that what?
So these are the tax rates for each school district, um, on residential, commercial, agricultural, and personal equity.
Residential highest.
Yeah, it's ranked residential highest to lowest.
So like Riverview Gardens, Jennings, Normandy, Hazelwood, those are all in the fourth district or the first district. Those are north, those are north St. Louis County districts. So what it's also, what's also so difficult about this problem is that, um, the individual residents who have the least capacity to pay have higher rates, because these school districts need a certain base level of funding just to educate students at a, at a, at a certain rate or a certain level. So, um, we're, we are, the system that we have of taxation means that, um, residents in these areas, um, experience a greater tax burden, um, than, um, residents in lower tax, um, lower taxing areas. And that's, a lot of that's tied to the property, the property values, as you can see, I think, pretty clearly. Um, so, but, but going like what Summer had said, which is that, you know, county government, we don't control the tax, we don't can, they are, they are separate taxing jurisdictions, they're completely separate government layers, school districts. However, the programs and the work that county does to improve and stabilize communities and bring back vibrancy and bring back growth is going to help these school districts by, um, by over time adding and sort of stabilizing their, their property base, so that they, um, you know, can, can, um, extract less, you know, have lower rates to extract less out of individuals. So while we don't have direct levers, we do have a lot of policies, um, that we can be engaging in that can, over time, um, bring stability back to some of these school districts through indirect matters.
The county does have tags, tax, um, tax.
Authority?
Authority, for some things, though, right? Just not this, not all of it. Like, the county, um, charges taxes on residents.
That's true.
Um, is it separate than these?
That's correct. So your, your, well, your tax bill is made up, so the tax bill that you receive from St. Louis County Government every year is we are statutorily required to collect the, the taxation for every taxing authority in St. Louis County. So that bill that you receive from St. Louis County.
That you pay to the order of St. Louis County.
That you pay to St. Louis County is only about 5% of your property tax bill remains with St. Louis County. We then distribute 90, about 95% of those monies back to the taxing jurisdictions, which are going to include things such as the municipalities, the school districts, the fire districts.
The zoo museum.
The zoo museum district. All, they're all separate taxing authorities that have their own ability to set a tax levy. That's why St. Louis County Government has no authority to tell Riverview Gardens School District to change their tax levies. They are a completely separate creature of government that has that sort of taxing authority. Um, so that's where.
So St. Louis County is just collecting it for them.
That's right. We, we collect and then remit it back to them, because otherwise, what would occur is every taxing jurisdiction would send you a bill.
Yeah, if, when you get your bill this year, flip it over and on the back, you'll see the breakdown of, of who's getting what.
About 50% of it goes to your school.
And they have a really nice infographic on the screens down in the lobby that shows the pie chart of where your taxes go, and it's basically just the school, and then everything else is.
About half of it goes to the schools. Um, the fire protection districts are also a fairly large, um, chunk of that. Um, your, most municipalities levy, uh, property tax, and it's generally higher than the county's property tax. So, um, you know, a fair chunk goes to a municipality if you are a resident of a municipality. Um, and that's why, uh, our unincorporated residents get to enjoy a lower tax burden, um, by being residents of unincorporated St. Louis County. And St. Louis County's ability to provide services to, at scale, because we're the largest provider of local government services, means that we're able to provide services, um, at a lower cost per unit of service provision than most other local governments, and that's, that's a function of our economies of scale.
Sounds like a great idea. Um, what about the school districts? I wanna say working together, but, um, like, it's a state, the state education board. Do they have any say in the local districts, or is there any, any governing agents or governing group that?
Tech, um, school districts are, and, and I know that Paul can speak to it because he has some connection to, um, school districts.
My wife's a teacher.
However, you know, that's like, the school board is in essence, the county, the, the county council, the school board is essentially the council of, of a, of a school district. That's why, uh, and school districts have very wide latitude, um, within their charge of educating the, the, the children within their territorial limits, um, to set tax rates and.
Not individually, I'm talking about like, on a higher level, the state board or, like.
Other guidelines for, for, for the education.
Now, there are state, like, educational standards that cert, that school districts have to meet, but the state does not go in and mandate that, you know, school district, right, the, the configuration of the system.
But, but is the state providing tax dollars to these school districts?
Oh, that's an interesting question that I don't actually know the direct answer to. I, they do, but I don't know the mechanism by which. Summer knows.
Oh, oh dear. Okay. Um, I, I used to work at an education think tank in the city, so, um, yes, the state does provide, it's based on average daily attendance of each school. Um, so, you know, the population stagnation problem also bleeds into here, right? Because if the, the population of students isn't increasing, then each school is getting fewer dollars, yeah.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. So you can see it's a very complex, how these things all tie together.
I've been saying this a lot lately, but there's, there's a reason, sort of in the planning world, we call them wicked problems, um, because there is no sort of easy answer to, to any of this.
The special school districts.
That's right. That, and that's a, and I think that's a good, that's a, a, a good example of special school district. Every, every property in St. Louis County is subject to the special school district.
And the community college.
And, yes, but the special school district is about providing funding, um, for students that have, um, special educational needs to resident through, to all the districts in St. Louis County. So we do collect a set amount, same rate countywide, to support districts with, um, special educational needs and within their territorial.
That also includes South County tech. That's, that's part of.
I suppose it does.
Yes.
Okay. It also includes, uh, programs for the kids that are accelerated.
Yes.
That gives them the money for that, too. So it's just not, you know, problem for all the kids that are slow.
There's a North County.
You know, it is, it used to be more tech schools, and I think you're gonna see that come back to.
Yeah.
Not so much through the county, at each one of our high schools or near.
Yeah. And I, this is me editorializing, and I recognize that, but that, that's where the, the countywide special school district, I think, is a good example of, um, you know, when we pull our resources together as a county, because as a county, we have a lot of resources at our disposal, um, that we can, uh, do good things at, at a lower cost than this very fragmented system that we have, that we've created, so. So.
More questions? Ready to go to the order?
Yeah.
I, I have a question, actually. So at the next Planning Commission Executive Meeting, my request is that one of the three of you would report out on what we discussed today to the, your fellow commissioners. So if you want to fight amongst yourselves about who gets the privilege of doing that, think on it and then.
Yeah. But I think that's, yes, if it won, it would be something that if we want to put, because we will have minutes for this meeting. So there will be minutes produced for this meeting, essentially turning the minutes into a memo or, because that way, like at the beginning of your all's meetings where the, the agendas for the committee meetings, we can have the minutes sort of serve as.
Yeah, yeah, we can help.
We're thinking, I'm thinking this through as you're saying it, because I don't want it to become some sort of, if we're producing minutes, can that be sort of the basis for?
It's not a memory test.
Correct.
We'll provide you notes.
I see Paula nodding her head that she'll do it.
That's what I got too.
That's what I saw.
Question for Paula? So as a secretary, as our secretary of the Comprehensive Plan Committee here, I think that would be great.
Paul will support you.
Yes. We don't technically have officers. Y'all can take turns, I guess, if you want.
Or we could all. We have, we have this consolidated in some form. I'm sure all three of you.
Sure.
For Chris. Yeah. Hit it to us.
Yeah.
It's the Friday before, okay?
Sure, sure, sure.
Great. Oh, one thing I wanted to bring up for the good of the order, looking at affordable housing. What was brought up at our table was not called affordable housing anymore. We want to call it reasonable housing.
Hmm. Because affordable has a certain, has a, has a certain, yes.
But I, I don't know.
Nobody wants to live in affordable housing, but reasonable housing sounds very smart.
Yes. And then.
You're being reasonable.
Yes. You know, this is, there was a really interesting story in the New York Times a couple of days ago about how the housing crisis that we used to think of in superstar cities has been nationalized, that residents throughout the country are experiencing, in cities big and small, in areas, high growth and low growth. And places are looking at how do we help support a middle-class housing market in a way that we've never had to do before? How do we help residents that have, you know, solid jobs but are being priced out of this housing market? You know, what are the kinds of things that, that the public sector can be doing to intervene to, to do so? And how do we support that? So this process also is intended to look at a lot of ways that, you know, what does it mean for St. Louis County to have a, a housing market where folks can feel like that they can get ahead and get a house? Because that's one of the key ways that people feel comfortable and confident in their ability to get ahead and build wealth is through the, the ownership of a home. So.
Right on target there. Okay, anybody else? No? Like to adjourn this meeting? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye? All those opposed? I can have that. We are adjourned.
All right.
So our next meeting, September 23rd.
But in the interim, we'll see you at the regular Planning Commission meetings.
Not us.
That's right.
Oh, that's right.
Yes. We, Atlanta.